Hello, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. It's right now 7:03. We have in the hall all five members of the Select Board, including Vice Chair Carrera, members McChrisky, Roberts, Gito, and myself. So having a quorum present, we call to order this meeting. The first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. If you are able, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For our second order of business, we have an executive session. It's executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is for Athia and Library, and the chair does so declare that we should have this conversation in executive session. So is there a motion to enter executive session? Okay, made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. We will be returning after the executive session to an open session. Hopefully, we'll see you guys in the next 20 minutes or so. Thank you. Okay. Welcome back. We call back to order the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. The time is now 7:33. The next order of business on our agenda is citizens' comments. I just want to check to see is there anybody online who wants an opportunity to speak? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody here who would like to? Okay, so we'll take the comments. Unfortunately, I don't have, there's usually something I read, but I'm going to skip that for tonight. I think you're all familiar with it, but we'll, I'm not going to necessarily time them, but if you can keep it to roughly three minutes, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much, and the first speaker, Ms. Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Singing a chorus of a song you've heard before. Tomorrow, there's going to be a holiday party at the senior center. And I was lucky enough to get a ticket, but there is a waitlist. There shouldn't be that kind of thing happening. There's over 3,000 seniors, and there's only 100 seats. Not every senior has family in Stoughton or nearby that's going to welcome them either to Hanukkah, or Kwanzaa, or Christmas. And I wish we could keep those folks in mind. The other thing is, yesterday, I went to one medical appointment and found out that my PCP wanted to see me Friday morning at 8:30. So I immediately called for transportation, and unfortunately, there was no room on the bus. So luckily, I have a relationship with dial-up ad, and I will get to and from my appointment. But I know budget time is coming, and it isn't just making the senior center larger, which I know will take years, but we could hire a few more people to drive those buses. I think there's six buses. I don't, I think there's three and a half drivers. Friday, they stopped the run at 11:00 a.m. We need to do something about that. Some doctors practice in different buildings, and the ones that the bus goes to, my doctor practices in East Bridgewater. The bus doesn't go there. So I have to go when he's in Brockton. Well, he's in Brockton on Friday, so I have to somehow get an appointment between 7:00 and 11:00 because I have to be home by 11:00. So let's say the appointment has to be between 7:00 and 10:00. I'm sure that I'm not the only senior this happens to. So I'm pleading, I know things are tight, and I know everybody wants everything, but I think a large portion of our population, I am a taxpayer. I do own property in Stoughton. We're not, seniors aren't freeloaders, and if there's services provided, they should be provided to more of us than they are now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Murphy?
At first, I was saying that I couldn't hear you, but seeing that I'm up here, I will say something. Last week, you had, you were going to look at the noise ordinance, and I realize I do put it off, and I respect that. I did send my comments to the town manager, and hopefully that he can go and take some of them, if not all of them, and go from there. And I understand it's, you know, you have a heavy and full agenda. The only request that I make is that if it has to go before town meeting in the spring, that the lawyer looks at it, it gets all, you know, vetted.
Vetted, yeah.
And that way, the air goes through nice and clean, but...
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
I know it's not a discussion, but just feedback. Thank you, Peter. Got your letter, got Georgia's letter. I got Mr. Gito's letter. So that's the way the process is working moving forward. We get citizens' comments, we get comments from the board. They're already in the hands of the attorney. I'm meeting with him Thursday morning to see which ones he can incorporate into the agreement. I've asked him to back away from the decibel argument because nobody carries a meter around with them. He's agreed to do that, and so, and Lou had some great comments as well. So yes, it's all in process. The attorney has it, and we'll have a new draft to bring to the board in the next week or so.
Thank you, and I appreciate your effort.
And thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dulisky?
I'll make a brief. I don't have to sit down.
We're going to need to get you in.
Okay? My letter is in also, so I'll wait to see what happens so we can...
Thank you so much. And I see we have one more person who's joined online. I'll just give the people online another opportunity if anybody wants to speak. This is, we're in citizens' comments right now. Just raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. And once again, nobody else here is looking to speak? Great. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your comments. The next item on the agenda is Select Board comments. And I'll start with, just from my right, Mr. McChrisky?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, I believe it was mentioned earlier, but just offer once again condolences to Superintendent of School Joseph Baeida on the loss of his dad. Services will be held, I believe, Monday, this coming Monday, and the services will be at the Fowley Funeral Home if anybody wanted to look it up for the hours of visitation. I've known Joe Baeida a long time, when he was on the school committee years ago before becoming a superintendent, and have found him a joy to work with. And my mom happened to be in the same hospital as Mr. Baeida when he was there, and I had the opportunity, you know, to talk with him a little bit and share a couple laughs, so I'll never forget that. So again, on behalf of myself, and I hope I can speak for my colleagues and the residents of Stoughton, that we, you know, we all extend our sincerest condolences to Superintendent Joe Baeida and his family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Carrera, do you have any comments?
No, I'm glad Joe brought up the pass, yeah. I'm glad Joe brought up the passing of Mr. Baeida. He's probably one of the nicest men I've met in my life. I've worked for him. He was very appreciative, and I've known Joe a long time, when he was just a schoolteacher over at Sharon High School, and look at what he's become now. So it's, it's a, it's an testament to who his father was. His father was like one of the hottest working men, very proud. His property is immaculate. And that's all I want to say. My heart goes out to Joe because I know how close they were. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Roberts?
Two comments, Mr. Chairman. First, my heart goes out to Mr. Dr. Baeida as well. It breaks my heart when I hear about any time there's a death, but especially when there are people that you know because it hits you harder. But my original comment before I heard of that news was regarding some emails that are going back and forth this afternoon, and on the back end of the email, it accused our town manager of using bullying tactics. On the front end of the email, it was a citizen, a resident of the town of Stoughton that was campaigning and fundraising in the library. So if someone could actually provide the facts, and this is for transparency sake, what is going on? Because when people use words like bullying, then we want to address it and nip it, but when, also when residents are campaigning, I always heard that it was a law or regulation that that's, especially with fundraising attached to it, that that should not occur. So there's some kind of breakdown going on between protocol, regulation, and policy. So through you, Mr. Chairman, if I can get some clarity on the facts that occurred, so we will know as a Select Board if we need to take action. Please.
Thank you so much. So if, Mr. Town Manager, would you feel comfortable putting together, you know, a report? You could distribute it to the members of the Select Board that just detail the, I guess, email back and forth and the source of information?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be delighted to do that. I'm happy to do that. But now that the cat's out of the bag and I've been referred to as a bully, I would appreciate the opportunity to share the facts publicly.
Of course. Yeah, yeah. I wanted to leave that up to you, but by all means, we've got no problems discussing it publicly.
I'm remiss, I'm reluctant to do it because the last thing a town manager ever wants to be is the center of controversy. So I'm going to stick to the facts, and I invite any member of the board, if I step outside that, those boundaries, to push me right back into the facts. I received a call from a member of the Republican Town Committee last week saying to me that she's concerned that she received a letter from the chairman of the Republican Town Committee in the form of an agenda inviting them to a meeting, I believe it was at Tuesday night. I stand corrected if it's not Tuesday night. And in the letter, it said that we're going to talk about fundraising in a public building, which is a direct violation of the law, to support the no campaign for the school project. So I wrote to Ms. Lyons immediately, and I wasn't prepared for this, so I don't have the letter or I'd read it out loud. But it started off by saying, "Dear Lisa, I know you to be a law-abiding citizen and would never do anything purposely. But as someone who worked for the state for 13 years and has gone through every training class, I know that what you're proposed for that meeting is way out of bounds. And I just want to bring it to your attention." And I gave her the section of the law for her to read that not only says that fundraising is prohibited in public buildings, it specifies library punishable by a $1,000 fine and one year imprisonment. I said, "So I'm just writing this to you as a citizen of Stoughton, as I would any citizen. Put, I can put mine and Lisa's differences and disagreements aside. I have to look out for our citizens' best interests. You all have a copy of the letter I wrote. I think you'd agree there was nothing intimidating or antagonizing or bullying about it." The very next day, the person called me again and said, "Well, we now have a written agenda." And on the agenda, I said, "Well, stop talking about, why don't you send it to me?" So she sent it to me. And on the agenda on the bottom, and I'm paraphrasing, it says, "If you want to make a donation, you can send the cash to me at this address," which was Ms. Lyons' home address. So I wrote to her again, and I said, "Lisa, I'm not trying to poke the bear. I'm not trying to intimidate you. I'm not trying to do anything other than protect you. I now have a copy of the agenda. You do not want to have this discussion in a public building at a public meeting. Send cash to my home and talk about fundraising in a public building. I'm telling you, it will be a problem." No copies, nothing, nothing antagonizing, nothing intimidating. So I wrote to her this morning, and I may have the chronology in order. I just received a copy of the letter. I was told about it the first time. I said, "Lisa, I got it. Trust me. You need to make this right. You should reach out to OCPF, speak about your lack of knowledge about the law." Well, she wrote back to me a letter, which I received while at the State House today, and it said, "You're trying to intimidate me. You're a bully. You're arrogant. You're ignorant. If you can't prove that it didn't happen," something along those lines. I'm paraphrasing. So I called her on the way home from the State House, and I said, "Lisa, before you speak, let me tell you, on my children's good health, I'm only looking out for your best interest as I would anybody in the town of Stoughton that doesn't know and been ruled by the state laws the way I have. I don't want you to get on the wrong road." She said, "I don't believe you. I think you're trying to intimidate me and scare me. This, this project is this, this project..." I said, "This isn't about the project. It's about mass general law, and it's about complying with mass general law. This is very serious stuff." And so I said, "I'm going to hang up now because I don't want to get into this type of conversation with you. I'm sorry you read it that way. I promise I will never reach out to you again." And it goes under the heading, "No Good Deed Goes Unpunished." And I will never reach out to her again as she's walking straight on into quicksand. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to address it. I can say to you in full candor, looking you right in the eye, I did nothing but try to protect this citizen of Stoughton and got my head kicked in for it, and it seems to be a recurring theme. So thank you for letting me share the facts. And Ms. Roberts, thank you for asking me the question.
I've had a sort of similar issue, not with Ms. Lyons, but a couple of, I don't know, maybe a year ago or so, accused of things that I didn't say or do in emails. And my response to that was to simply read every single one of them in public and then also attach them to the minutes. If anybody has any, had any questions, they have full access to those documents. For, unless anybody objects, I would like to propose that we attach the, those emails to our minutes for this meeting. If anybody has any objections, if anybody has any questions in the public, if they want to see it for themselves and judge for themselves, I think they have every right to. So...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Is there anybody who shows, has any discomfort with that, any issues?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So then we'll attach all of that information to the minutes for this meeting, and the public will have that available if something they want to look into.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I was just, every once in a while, you'll see a text pop up, somebody watching from home, and when we were offering condolences, somebody just informed me that our long-serving member of the zoning board, Dan Pessia, has passed away. And Dan was one of the good guys, one of the good, there's a lot of good people. I've gone way back with Dan in so many ways, you know, back to my first campaign for this office. Dan was a great guy, just a trusted, decent soul of a person that would sometimes always tell you what he thinks, even if it wasn't going your way. But, you know, that's what a true friend does. So I am so hurt to read this and to know that our good friend has passed. I guess the only thing that we can say is that his pain is over, you know, because he had, he was in pain for a long time and was still coming to the meetings, you know, and taking part, doing his job for the residents of the town. So Dan, my good friend, may he rest in peace and in my official capacity, and I hope again, with the support of my colleagues, wish Dan eternal peace and the best to his family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. I think he was the precinct one rep for a long time. That's how I got to know him as a rep, and I didn't know him well, only...
Precinct three.
Precinct three? Okay, that's all right. But I did, I got to meet him and speak with him a couple of times during town meeting, and not, I didn't know him well, but he was always very kind to me, and I, my thoughts are with his family. Thank you. Ms. Roberts, do you have any other comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gito, any comments for tonight?
I can't add anything to the, to the discussions and the passing of two very nice people. So I shan't. I mean, I think a lot of things have been said, but just be repetitious. It's unfortunate, but it's life. The only other thing that I would, would ask is, we got a, a letter from a resident on Pearl Street around the other side of Central and Pearl, indicating that there was a problem with, with lights shining in the, into her house. I think that that situation has occurred in the past, and I just suggest that, that we inform the, you, Mr. Town Manager, or somebody beneath you, inform the, the property owner that is causing the problem, that they put lights that need to be adjusted. I think this has happened several times before, but let's just fix it.
Thank you, Lou. Just a quick question. Do you, do you have information on the caller, the name and the phone number, so I can call them?
I'll send that to you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody on the board? Mr. Coulter, are there town manager comments?
No comments, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. So our next order of business is a presentation by our town engineer, along with the deputy chief, our newly anointed deputy chief, James O'Connor. This is a traffic, recommendations for Pleasant Street, Lincoln Street intersection, Chapman Road, parking on Grove Street and, at Pleasant Street, and Simpson Street parking.
Hope everybody's well tonight. How you doing, Mr. Manager? Nice seeing you. I don't think I saw you all day today for the first time in a year. I've had the most relaxing day I've ever had.
You always cracks jokes for me that I'm not that funny, so...
Yeah, exactly, exactly. All right, well, thanks for having me tonight. Just to recap, I know over the last few months, you've had some complaints and citizen comments, so have we regarding the Lincoln and Pleasant Street intersection. The manager directed the engineering department, along with the police department, to take a look at that intersection and kind of evaluate it, come back to the board, and give you an update of what we recommend moving forward. Just to recap, in 2020, the board took a vote to actually implement a measure, an improvement at that intersection. There were three options proposed to the board at that time, I believe you were on the board, Mr. Cavey.
Yep.
There was a short-term, a midterm, and a long-term solution to the intersection. The long-term solution was obviously a signalized intersection, very costly. A midterm was a four-way flashing stop sign intersection with the understanding that if you did that, you would pursue a signalized intersection. Four-way stop sign should be like an interim measure. And then the short-term was a flashing dynamic beacon at the intersection. I'll explain to you what that is. The board voted on the short-term one, to look at it, evaluate it, and if there was issues, we would address the issues by either moving to the midterm or the long-term solution or both. So essentially, what we did is we installed the flashing dynamic beacons at this intersection. What this is, and if I'm going too fast, I'm getting too engineering on you, let me, let me know. Lincoln Street gets two stop signs, two special stop signs. We're going to call them special stop signs with a lot of boxes on them. They don't look like a normal stop sign. They flash too. They communicate with two signs we added up on Pleasant Street, about 200 or 300 feet in each direction. They're dangerous intersection signs. It's the big cross that you see, the black cross that says dangerous intersection in each direction. When a car pulls up on Lincoln Street, it communicates with the other signs, and they start flashing. So they don't flash all the time. They only flash when cars approach to Lincoln Street, which, which slow, should, in theory, slow down cars on Pleasant Street. Oh, you know, you're driving on Pleasant Street, all of a sudden, you see a sign start flashing, most people would slow down. And relatively cheap, cheap measure to explore. We explored that, implemented it, installed it in early 2022? 21? 2021, sorry. I have my years wrong. You voted it 2020, 2021. It's installed, and if you look at the information we gave you, in a nutshell, the accidents went down from 17 before that, an average of 17, to 10 the year after. So it drastically improved the accidents at that intersection. Now, somewhere after 2022, the stop signs, one stop sign got taken down, and then it got replaced with a stop sign that doesn't communicate with the signs. Okay? So the system's broken at that point. It doesn't work, right? So a new stop sign got put in, the system doesn't work as it was intended to. The crashes started going up a little bit over time. When we started hearing your discussions at your meetings, that, well, what's going on over there? I'm like, "We just implemented measures over here to fix, to improve the intersection." So we went back out there, looked at it, and yep, that's when we noticed the stop sign being just a normal stop sign. It was not the stop sign that communicates. So, long story short, we spoke to DPW. They've ordered the stop signs, the new stop signs, the ones that are supposed to work with the other signs, that communicate with the other signs. They will be in in four weeks, and they will be installed in four weeks, according to an email I got from our director today. Now, my recommendation to your board was, would be six months, a year. Get those signs up, evaluate it for one more period of time, and compare that crash data with the historic crash data we have. And if I'm speaking out of line, I know Jimmy O'Connor's in back of us, but we've communicated on this. Evaluate that and come back to your board with the results. Now, if there's no improvement, if there's an increase in crashes, or not a big improvement, then we probably should move on to another solution to the problem. And we can use those signs for other areas of town. So we would move on to other measures. At the same time, I'm also having our traffic engineers right now, we created a purchase order over the last month, about, about a month ago, to go out there and collect new information, new data, traffic counts, new information, look at the intersection again. Since then, we've actually, there's a big tree on Lincoln Street that used to, I think, I remember you talking about this, Scott, causing sight distance issues. That tree had issues, it got cut down. We were able to move the stop line up to provide better sight distances. There's also other things we can do at that intersection, specifically if we put a four-way stop sign, if that's something we do in the future, if, if these results don't come back. If we put a four-way stop sign, if you can envision this, the corner of Jimmy's Market over there, that parking lot, it needs an island of some sort on the corner to support a stop sign, unless we put it in the middle of pavement. a stop sign, unless we put it in the middle of pavement, which will get knocked down the next day. We want to protect it with an island, plus that island would, would be an area for a landing spot for a crosswalk going across. There's sidewalks in there. Right now, people do cross at that intersection, but there's no real safe area to do it. So it would, it would have a few benefits. No matter what, we're probably going to explore that island option and get that built, because that, that can be built no matter, no matter what we do.
You'll probably have to build that island with, with probably the same thing they got up at Chapman Road, because when people go to stop there, they go around the cars and through that one corner.
Yeah, you bring up a good point.
Right out the other side into Lincoln Street.
I like the way you think, so.
The other thing that scares you is the guy that backs out of the store who's got his scratch tickets right into 139.
That's why we can't just chuck an island there, right? We gotta, we gotta, we gotta think about it, put things that people can see when they're backing up, things that will not affect the stop sign we put up eventually, they will cost a little bit of money. So we want to evaluate it. That's what our engineers are doing now for that specific issue. So at this point in time, I would recommend we put the new stop signs up. We come back to your board at a period of six months or a year. You know, a year's always an easier period to evaluate, but whatever your board, you know, deems appropriate. And then come back to you, report the results, and then we make a decision if we're doing something different at that time. Dan, I don't know if you have anything. Craig's, Craig's heavily involved in this project every day, so.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Yeah, I just wanted to mention too, that over the summer, with the Old Colony Planning Council, we performed the road safety audit for the Route 139 corridor. And this intersection at the, at the road safety audit was a topic of much discussion. And, you know, this was one of our top priorities that came up. So we're well aware of the ongoing problems at this intersection, and, you know, we hope to, to find a solution that, that really reduces the amount of crashes there.
So with regard to this Pleasant Street, Lincoln Street intersection, July, the first, the first meeting of the select board in July works as a good time to revisit that. That's, you know, right after the end of the fiscal year, and it seems like a pretty good place to snap the line and.
I like that. Six-month timeframe, pretty much.
Yes, it's, yeah, six and a half months. So I'm not sure, Jilda, if we have a way to sort of remind ourselves, a sticky note perhaps, but.
Jilda's very, Jilda's very good at reminding people to do things, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get this back on the agenda to revisit next steps in, in July.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is one of several intersections that, that are sort of ill-defined. You're dealing with one on Pine Street and Pleasant at the present time. You dealt with one in town meeting on Weston Plain. You're going to be dealing with one on Turnpike and Park Street. And there are several others. The one that we're talking about now is one where the business on one of the corners is no defined edge of road. And so people come up to that intersection, look around, and scoot out whatever way they want to. Without going into gory detail, I probably lost about 400 or 500 miles on each of my tires a few weeks ago, when a person apparently saw me coming from a long way off and waited until I got almost to the intersection, and then leaped out into, didn't leap, just drove out into the intersection, taking a left-hand turn and going down toward town. I mean, I left a lot of rubber on that road. Thank goodness I have a wonderful Subaru, which we all love. But I think that you need to begin to look at a number of those intersections and prioritize them. I mean, this is not something that just happened. A number of others you're dealing with. You could probably get some artificial intelligence program to go through your, your street layouts and pick out a whole bunch of these for you in a very short amount of time. But they ought to be dealt with. It's cheaper to fix them and fix them right than let them go on and hurt people. And put that list out, like the DPW puts a list out of streets that they are going to be fixing. We should do the same thing with, with some of these intersections. I mean, they were created in the 1700s. We're not in the 1700s anymore. You've got a wonderful crew. I think you just need to get on with it. I mean, I would, I would start to push some of these things up as quickly as possible. This is an intersection we've been talking about for a long time, the tree, the cutting of branches, the, any endless number of things that are happening. Onto a different part of this same topic. I don't know who is in charge of maintaining the things that we have put in. When that stoplight, stop sign was destroyed, it should have been fixed immediately. There should have been money in the budget to do that. We shouldn't be waiting for a year in order for that to occur. And I'm not sure that the engineering department is the logical place for finding a problem or the DPW. When the, the police department goes up to a crash and sees some of the town property destroyed, somebody should tell somebody about that. So perhaps some procedures have to be looked at. Thank you.
If I could just respond, Mr. Chairman? Thanks for the comments, Lou. So I agree with that. I think Tom and I need to have a discussion about how we come up with a plan when we put some of these special stop signs or other assets in town, having a periodic plan to inspect and check these things. But to go on to your previous point, you're leading into like what we've put on the website in TownCrier. Since I started 13 years ago, as you can know, there's been a lot of traffic improvements in town. We actually had a traffic plan that we published. We took all the information from the master plan, different studies from OCPC, and we came up with a plan. And then it was funny, like about two or three years ago, Craig and I, you know, we, a couple of years ago, we, we sat down, we went through that plan and said, wow, we, we got most of this done. Like there was millions and millions of dollars of projects completed that we did. So thank you, Craig, for helping me with that. And thank you to this board in the town for endorsing all those projects. So we're proud of getting all those, those tip-top priorities completed. So now, you've seen a recent survey that we sent out, a complete street survey. That's a new word of seeing traffic improvements, complete streets. So please do the complete street survey, because that's going to create a plan for the next five or 10 years of, of traffic projects. Some of the lower ones, we don't need, we can, we can handle them in-house and get those done, the low-hanging fruit. But for the bigger traffic projects, we really need the, the public's input. Please go on the website and fill out that survey. It's a very easy tool. You go on the GIS, you pick a spot, you comment on it. I know Mr. Murphy already did that for his sidewalk project on Turnpike Street. So please do that. That creates, when I come to town meeting for a traffic project, it's very, it's very beneficial to me to come with a plan, like Mr. Gito's saying, and we're attacking priority number one. If I come there and say, well, Mr. Murphy wants a sidewalk, you should approve it. You know, it's, it's difficult for me if I don't base it on a plan. So that's why we're, we're creating the, the plan moving forward. To me and Craig, it's just the way to go. We had a plan, we completed it, now we want to get a new plan for the next five or 10 years. So thank you, Mr. Gito, for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions? I do want to just, anybody who has any questions, we're going to go through all of them. I'm not starting to stop anybody, but I do, you know, this is the, this is sort of a special meeting. If, if, I'd like to be able to move this along a little bit. I think we've only reached like item A from, from your list. I want to get through them all. But at the same time, people have questions, they've got to ask them, so. Mr. McCrisky.
Just a comment. I think one thing we have to remember, and it seems to get lost every time we talk about this issue, is that intersections don't cause problems. People cause problems. And the cars don't hit each other on purpose. People don't know how to drive their cars. Maybe not everybody knows that we lost ladder two for quite a few months, because somebody thought it was a four-way stop and stopped at their sign and then took off, and they, right in the path of the fire truck. Just happened that a very good friend of mine had the dash cam showing all that. We have people that are driving like maniacs, I was going to say the wrong word, in the town. Those of us who've been around this town a long time, some of us have grown up in this town, and we see the difference. And at some time, I'd like to have a conversation on enforcement as well. The, it just, the speed that people come down streets, you know, I don't know, I won't, won't get in here, you know, because I didn't, deputy chief hasn't been prepared for it, but I would like to engage in a conversation as to where enforcement comes in here. If we take this track of not doing enforcement and correcting intersections to make up for people's irresponsible driving habits, and this is the world I come from, we're going to be spending money, lots and lots of money, you know, when we should be out there, you know, doing some kind of enforcement. And again, I'm open to anything, but I just don't see this as the, you know, the answer to just fixing intersections to stop people from doing what they should be doing, driving responsibly. So I look forward to having a conversation about that at some time. We don't have this kind of money. And no matter where you go, any intersection, we talked briefly about the speed, which is, I think, being, you know, verified with Prospect Street. I don't know about anybody else, but I've sat down there, and we knew that would happen. Maybe, probably a little less than I thought it would be. I thought it would be more, but it's, it's definitely a change. And I guess, anybody who lives in the town and drives to this town, we all see it. If anybody doesn't, boy, I'll tell you, I'd like to be in there because it drives me nuts. Just my little street that is probably 2,000 feet between two major roads, people get up to doing like 50 miles an hour. They accelerate in the first thing, then they're right on the brakes. I mean, for what reason? How many intersections I see that people just don't stop at the intersections, right through the red light? You know, and we could put big flashing red lights, and we can do bright lines, and we're not going to stop that. I'd even be looking into the consideration of there's some of our problem intersections, we should look at the cameras and look at the, the, the system where it scans the plate and just issue the, you know, I mean, if that's what we got to do, you know, it, it does, and people can laugh and smile, but you know, this is the integrity of our community and our neighborhoods as well. You know, and there's kids in these neighborhoods. A car hits and they both collide, and we saw the one yesterday on Canton Street, the speed by the car, one of the vehicles was ridiculous. Now granted, I believe that involved an OUI as well, so that's, you know, contributes to that, but we have Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Murphy, who have talked about speed on their streets over and over and over, over and over and over, and we're still here talking about it. So I look forward to the next conversation on how we're going to increase enforcement, you know, to try to, you know, keep some of this stuff from getting out of hand. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to see if we can move on to the next item, which is Chapman Road.
This is where we do the handoff to Jimmy O'Connor.
Perfect.
Thank you for having me again. We just find the right file, because we got three of them tonight. All right, Chapman Road. So Mr. Coulter had asked me to look into this. So basically, pretty much almost anytime, not every time, but anytime we get a speeding complaint, the first thing we do is we put this unit called the JMR unit up in the area. What that does for us is give us volume, speed, classification of vehicles and things like that, so that we can get actual data and also see, one, if there is a problem, two, if there, if there is a problem, it gives us more of a better timeline, so that we're not just going, hey, we got to put a car up there 24 hours a day, because it's not possible. So we try and get the timeline, so that we can focus on the busiest times. Now granted, everyone knows most of them is going to be in the morning during travel time and the afternoon during travel time, but sometimes they vary a little bit depending on the area. And this helps a lot. And one of the things that we've learned is it actually has dispelled a lot of the speeding complaints that people have. And I understand, I live on a side road. When you're out in your yard, car goes by, you're like, man, that car was flying by. But that's that odd perception, because you're not traveling with them, you're standing still. And the other, I don't want to call it novelty phenomenon, is you see a big truck going by, that thing could be going 20 miles an hour, but you think it's coming at 40. And then really small cars as well could be going 20 miles an hour, and you think they're going 40. Most people could pick out the SUVs and the, you know, normal-sized cars. So that's where that comes in. So Chapman Road is a road that, I mean, for most of my career, we have done a ton of work on, in the sense of enforcement for truck violations and speeding issues up there. We worked with the engineering department, GPI, Public Works, to help get better signage, narrow the roadway to help reduce the truck traffic comes up there. Now, is it perfect? No, but it has definitely reduced the amount of truck traffic up there. This one was geared more towards speeding. And just so everyone knows, and I'm assuming you guys have all the data, so we had it up for about three days. We had just over 3,500 cars go down the road in those three days. The average speed was 29 miles per hour, and the 85th percentile was 33. So the reason why we pick up on the 85th percentiles, because that's the number that they'll generally use to set a speed limit on a roadway, to be like, okay, what, 85% of the cars are going that speed, so in this case, 33 miles an hour or less. What the machine also does is we set a standard of 10 miles an hour for enforceable violations. Because let's be honest, if we were up there and you're going 31, 32, 33, 99% of the cops in this world are not going to stop a car for going three, five, eight, even, generally eight in most cases. That's why we give it 10. So in this case, only 2% of the vehicles, and I apologize, I don't know what the exact number is, 2%, would have had enforceable violations. So I think it's, actually, it's, it's 80 out of those 3,500 would have been enforceable Sounds like a lot, but in comparison to the total volume, it's really not that much. So basically, based off this data, at this point, I didn't feel comfortable making really any recommendations or changes or suggestions to do anything different to that roadway. Like where on, I'll use the example Walnut Street, where we implemented the speed humps as a trial measure for the first time. The volume on that road in two days was like 7,800. The average speed was 29, but the 85th percentile was 39 and a half, so almost 40 miles an hour. So that road, 40 miles So that road, 40 miles an hour, had a much greater volume, had a much greater speed, more action needed to be taken, and that's where the trial with the speed humps came into play. The cars are coming into that roadway at a slower pace because of the wall and the signage that was built up there. And listen, I'm never going to be ignorant enough to say that there's never speeding on that road, because there are the occasional cars that just take that straightaway and zip through, but they're few and far between. And basically, as I ended, like, I make no suggestions for any changes or improvements in that roadway. We, as the police department, can continue randomly to do some speed enforcement and truck enforcement up there, but it wouldn't be like an everyday thing, it would be random as far as I'm concerned. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Anybody from the board? Mr. Gito.
I think there's been a new state law passed that allows towns to, to set speed limits on certain roads at 20 or 25 miles an hour.
Yes, sir.
And that may well be something for Stoughton to consider in some of its subdivisions, and perhaps in some of the areas that Ms. McChrisky was mentioning.
So I believe, Mr. Gito, that is chapter 90, 17, I forget if it's B or C, I apologize.
We could all look it up. I mean...
No, it's, so, the process is, it's basically deeming it thickly settled, but at 25 instead of 30. And then, once you approve that, there's a process with the state of notification and notifying them of what, so a lot of towns, what you see, like Randolph Townwide, thickly settled, 25 miles per hour. And it can only be used for roadways that are not already posted with a speed limit. I've done, the only reason why I know is because I've done some research on it, because it's, it's probably a good thing for certain streets, and Chapman Road may be an option for that. And, and then it would just be, once the town approves it, once the state approves it, then the signs would have to be put up. And I don't know, again, this may have to be for the board and town council, if there's like a town meeting, like has to accept it-type law to be able to accept it, and then you can pick and choose your streets, or you can do it town-wide. Honestly, I'm not in favor of town-wide, because there are certain streets that that would not really work on, in my opinion, but on a road-by-road basis, I, I think that that would be a possibility.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, to do it town-wide would, would seem foolish, because we have some roads that are major and should have faster speeds on them. But there are a lot of places where perhaps that's not true. And perhaps your department could, if, if that's where the town manager wants to take this, could start to look at, at where it might make sense to do such a thing. I mean, I don't, I don't expect that a number of the, at least smaller subdivisions should have people expecting that they're going to travel 40 miles an hour to get from their house to, to a main road, or the same thing with, with somebody coming to visit. So maybe we should, maybe we should begin to look holistically at the town and figure out what might make sense for sort of a calmer and, and more congenial, as opposed to confrontational environment we live in. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, the, I live on a street, I live on Ewing Drive, and, and...
Sorry, what's...
I live on Ewing.
Ewing, okay, yeah.
And, yeah, when a car comes racing down there, you, I'm, it happens often enough that it really can be startling, there's a lot of kids down the way, but sort of looking back on it, it probably happens, you know, I probably witness it like a couple times a year, you know? And so, so I see where you're coming from, that it stands out as, as perhaps being worse than the data actually proves. I will say that I, I don't want to go on, but I'll tell you this, a quick story. When I was growing up, my, my mother, who always drove us to school, was a night owl. I'm a night owl. We kind of get up at the last possible minute on our way to get chops off at school, and we would come racing out of, out of, we had a half-mile-long driveway, and it's on a farm, come racing out, there's, you know, dust kicked, kicked behind us, engines roaring and onto the highway, onto a highway at the end of our street. And I always felt like we were just like, you know, going extremely fast. At some point, I looked over at the speedometer, and we were going like 35 miles an hour, but she had it in like second gear, right? So it felt, you know, pretty, pretty intense. But I, just to, to your point of sometimes things are perhaps easy to perceive as, as more intense than the...
Yeah, so I will say that I, I think it's three out of the last four that we've done little speed studies on have shown that there are not speeding issues. We just did Schumong Street in the area of James, not a major problem, but a little high at times. Liquid Drive showed not a speeding issue. Of course, like any street, the occasional cars zipping through there, but consistently, like, the 85th percentile was under 30. And maybe Kelsey Drive was the other one, where people reported cars allegedly going 70 miles an hour on a consistent basis, and the data did not show that at all. So, it showed 85% of the cars, actually, I think it was even 90% of the cars going under 30 miles an hour.
I'm, I'm outside of my area of expertise, and I know we have members of the board who know this better than I do, and I'm sure that you'd be able to advise better than, than I could. But it would seem to me that, that, you know, for people who are studying traffic, that there would, there should be some sort of correlation between speeding and rate of having accidents. And so if there was a lot of speeding, you'd expect to see, you know, a greater number of accidents. And maybe that's wrong, it's just my assumption, but it seems like that's what we're trying to prevent, are accidents.
Correct.
And so, are there accidents, a lot of accidents reported on Chapman?
No.
Okay.
I don't have the data in front of me, but I'd be, I'd be willing to go out and say that there probably hasn't been an accident on that road in a couple of years.
Okay.
And even then, it was, it was an OUI crash, if I recall.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Deputy Sergeant O'Connor. Is this the, okay, let me tell you what triggered my question. It was three-day monitoring of this street, and so I said to myself, wait a minute, I remember a previous investigation on Chapman Street. So I just looked in my phone, and it came from Brian Holmes from year 2020. So it's a history of a citizen expressing an issue in that area? Can you give me some history?
So, originally, it was 95% of the issues up there was the amount of truck traffic going up and down that road.
Right.
And that's what it was. And we originally did a study years in advance, which enabled us to get the truck exclusion on the road, because you need to reach a certain percentage of commercial vehicle traffic on the road to be a minimum of 5% to be, even to petition the state. And then, once that happened, kept getting pla, complaints from the residents. I, I specifically went up there and, on numerous occasions, spent a whole eight-hour shift up there and just sat there stopping trucks. So we put the J-MAR unit out there again to get the data, and that's what started the plan into narrowing the roadway to make it more difficult for the average truck to get on there, because...
From 30 to 24, something like that.
Yeah, because it, it basically comes right off 24 Harrison Boulevard, and you bang that quick left and quick right onto Chapman, it brings you out to Turnpike Street and avoids the light at Turnpike and Central, which, if you're driving a big truck, can be a little bit of a difficult turn because of the way cars sit at the red light on Turnpike. So we wanted to make that as difficult as possible for the larger trucks to get down there. So that's where the design came in of narrowing the roadway, adding in the signage. And when we did that, one of the things I had spoken to engineering about was, well, you can't just curb it because the trucks will just run over it. So we started talking about Jersey barriers as a possibility, and between engineering and Public Works, they came up with the wall, which, at first, I was caught off guard about how big it was and everything, but it's been working. And then, we've done some follow-up just to see if it's reduced the amount of truck traffic, and it has. I think the truck traffic, prior to the wall, went, was at like 7% of the traffic coming down there was, was commercial traffic, and I think it's been reduced based on the last study, I didn't even look at it for this one, was like 2%. So it greatly reduced it, which obviously is great, and I think this, I took a quick look at it because I knew it wasn't the focus of it, but it did show some trucks still going down, but obviously much fewer than it was in the past. So, that's where that whole history came from.
Thank you very much. That helps give some context, like you've been monitoring this over time.
Oh, yes.
And we respect your recommendation, but also, we've been looking at it for a long time, years, years.
And it, it led to work on Peters Drive as well, because once we got the initial truck exclusion up, Peters Drive wasn't a truck-rudder roadway, and then they just took the next turn, so that's the next street up. So then we looked into truck exclusion on that, and originally, it didn't meet the criteria, if I recall correctly, but then a sign was put up anyways. And then, we did another study on Peters and determined that the amount, and we got the permit through the state, and then the sign became a legal sign. So it, it's been an area-wide issue that we've been monitoring, keeping an eye on, dealing with for several years.
Thank you very much for the context and the history.
Thank you.
Of that street.
Okay, any further questions or comments? I know there's a member of the, the audience who'd like to speak, but this is not a public hearing, and we're not going to turn it into one right now, but we can, we can address it in the future. So, that's Chapman Road, the next is parking on Grove Street and Pleasant Street.
Okay. Thank you again. So, again, complaints regarding the cars parking along Grove Street from the driveway of 168 Pleasant Street, which exits and enters on Grove, to the intersection. So, as usual, I went up there, took some photos, there was like four or five cars at the time parked there, none of them from the area, so I don't know where they were going to or who they belonged to. But as I was, I'm approaching, I, I came up from Monk Street, took the right on the Grove, I could see the cars turning off of Pleasant, having to go wide and into my lane of traffic to avoid the cars and make the turn. And then as that's happening, you get the cars in the right lane veering to the right because they have to make room and almost hitting the curb. So the, the easy solution was quite evident, was to make that area no parking. It's from the driveway of 168 Pleasant, excuse me, yeah, 168 Pleasant Street, which is on Grove, up Grove to the intersection with Pleasant. It's about 122 feet distance-wise. So basically, it would maybe take three signs to be able to cover that area and make it no parking and make it safer for the traveling public up there. It's also difficult, because I actually had this problem when I was up there, now I'm thinking about it, is when you're coming up and those cars are there, and there's a pedestrian coming down Pleasant Street, you don't pick them up till the last minute. So, that will help that issue as well for people walking, biking, pushing carriages in that area.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Gito. What was that? No, it's okay.
Were those, are those cars always there?
There's always at least a couple there every time I go by there, during the day. It's not as bad at night, but during the day, so I don't know, I don't know why they're there or where they're going. If there was a business around, that would explain it, but I, I'm not aware of any right there.
Right. Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, what's your career?
I use, I use that street a lot. And I was trying to get around a corner, and the tribe of people were actually coming out of those cars and going across the street into the homes on the opposite side on 139, on Pleasant Street, you know, the rentals there. So that's where, at first, I thought it was the two big structures on the left-hand side, but it was actually...
So, one of the houses on Grove Street, I believe, is some type of like group home, and that's what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure, because I would never see anyone coming and going.
But I, I saw them go across, because the driveways on that, on that other side of Pleasant Street, from where you're talking...
Yeah, okay.
The driveways are narrow, so they stack up in there. So it must be like, oh, I gotta leave, or I'm, I'm not going to get stuck third car and, because they've gone from two families to three and fours on, in two-family homes.
That would make sense, then.
So that's, that's where a lot of, a lot of, that's what I saw and observed the day. I come around the corner and almost threw up, because there was a guy with his visor down, and I knew I was going to stop, because he didn't even see me.
It's a tough little corner with those cars there.
Perfect. Any other comments, questions? Okay, let's hit the, the last item, Simpson Street Parking.
So again, another parking issue, coming off the main street of Canton Street onto Simpson Street. I, I believe it's employees from the businesses that are across from McNamara's on that side. The parking along the side of the street is causing an issue making the turns in and off of Canton Street, especially for the school buses when schools getting out, because people are, kids are walking, kids are on bikes, there's no sidewalk there. So to make it safe, the easy, short-term solution is to add in the signage that we have all over the place around Cushing Street, Adams Street, Clapp Street is, is, I recommended making it no parking from 7:00 AM till 4:00 PM on school days. Long-term solution, I would love to see a sidewalk at some point that connects Cushing Street down to Canton Street, because there's a crosswalk from Memorial Drive across to Cushing, to Simpson Street, excuse me, but there's no, there's no sidewalk there, it just goes and ends. And it's the only area where there's not a sidewalk connecting for the kids going to and from school. So for a long-term plan, I feel like that's something we should look at, but obviously, there's a little bit more role to it because of the Accra, Accra Railroad crossing there, and getting to deal with them is above my pay grade. But I think the no parking in that area would, would increase the visibility, why, keep the road wide enough for the traffic coming in and out, especially school hours, and make it safer for the, for the buses and other trucks coming in and out of there.
Excellent. Any comments? Maybe over here? Mr. Gito.
Does it make sense to put an article in at annual town meeting to put a sidewalk in that? If that's the only area that doesn't have a sidewalk? I presume that in the past, kids would go through the fence and go across the railroad tracks. would go through the fence and go across the railroad tracks. I don't know if they still do that or not.
I think they still do a little bit.
But, but it would seem to me that it would be something that the town should be doing.
I, I disagree.
So I, I guess maybe you, the town manager, and the engine, town engineer should give some thought to that when that should happen. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, just a statement, we're talking about this, and I know that there are lists and lists of sidewalks that have been requested all over the town, and, and they still remain out there. I agree with the deputy on this one as well, but I know that there's still people asking for a sidewalk on Cushing Street out to Central. Leaving the middle school heading down Cushing to Central, and that's been out there for years, years. I, I think that with this, and I just said you don't want me to get going, because I could sit here until midnight tonight and talk to you about parking.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But, and the deputy's well aware of my numerous phone calls over the years about certain areas. So I, you know, I can applaud everything we're going, but I think if we're going to really look into this, it, it should be something that we put together a little subcommittee, you know, to work on something with a goal, a projected date or something to do. And even if we have to go to town meeting with an article to do, you know, a comprehensive traffic study, because it's getting out of control, we all know that. And there's just, and it's people that, you know, it's the business. I mean, when did you ever think that we'd see traffic backed up to the Corner Cafe on 138, or almost back to McDonald's, you know, I mean, during the commuting hours? I don't think we, you know, we all see it, so I think that's, we're just scratching the surface here.
Sure. If I may, so I don't know if I'm completely speaking out of terms, but I have made a past recommendation that, and I don't know what the deal is, where the, what the status is of this project, it's supposed to be a big project going in at that intersection, that they'd be on the hook for, as improvement there.
Which one is that?
The, the, Corner of Simpson and Canton.
Yeah, that, that would be something the planning board could address.
Right. For you, Mr. Chairman.
So with regard to these four items.
If I could just add a little something about the sidewalk at the...
Thank you.
The Hebrew Senior Life, as a part of the planning board decision, they are to do a conceptual plan for a sidewalk from that intersection over to Cushing Street. That's what we got them on the hook for, was at least to do the conceptual plan, but not to actually do the installation of the sidewalk. It's likely to be a very difficult installation, there's the railroad tracks there, several driveways and businesses, so it, it won't be easy, but we can at least get started and get a plan put forth that we'll know where to take it to the next step.
Perfect. So I want to go through these each one at a time, and because we have the deputy chief here, we'll start with Chapman Road and go down, we'll come back, swing back around to Pleasant Street. I just want to reexamine or rehear the recommendation for each one. If there's a vote necessary, I'm assuming you'd want to vote from the select board, there may be a couple of different votes if someone's looking to do something right now and something in the future. So with regard to Chapman Road, your recommendation.
I made no recommendations at this time, if there were no approvals.
So does anybody on the board have any motions they'd like to make? If not, I have, I do have a recommendation, which is that personally, at least tentatively, I'm talking about this July, you know, first meeting in July. I was wondering if, if, I just make a motion to request the deputy chief, or at least the safety officer for the Stone Police Department, reexamine those roads on, in March and again in June, same three-day study, and report back on the findings in the first week of July, and just let us know if there's any changes depending on the timeframe, whether the school's in or out. And we will just take another look at that when we're, we're looking at all these other ones. So that's, that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by, by Mr. Giotto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Nope? Okay, so that was...
Chairman, just a quick question. On the, on the two that were relatively minor on the parking, was that included in that motion, or was it just the, the roadways?
So that was just Chapman Road and the question of...
That's the Chapman Road, okay.
Yeah, speed. So it's doing one at a time, kind of slowly working through them all.
I'd like to see us put the parking ones that were, that were discussed by the deputy on an upcoming agenda and just get them voted.
Okay.
You know, I don't believe, and I'm just questioning myself, it's not a public hearing, it's just a public meeting, so it, it should be something relatively quick, based on some of the comments by the deputy. And I'd say deputy, you know, come up with a document that just, you know, the measurements like you normally do, but I don't think it has to be like next week. I know that you've got multiple responsibilities now, including, you know, some of the things you've had left over, so just when you can get it and fit it into your schedule, I'd like to see those recommendations so that we can get them at least going. And I'll probably talk to you about the one I've spoken to you about for years, Perry Street around the bend, because it does the same thing what the deputy was describing on the Monk Street one, is that at one point on the bend, after you go over the railroad tracks to continue down Perry Street where the road bends off to the right, there's always cars parked on the right side of the road, which puts you into the oncoming lane of traffic. So when you go around those vehicles, you end up facing another car coming the other way, and it's just, it's a real serious issue, so. But no, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So is that with regard to the parking on Grove Street and Pleasant Street?
Yeah, exactly, but I just, I'll talk with the deputy later on, and we can, because there's a few more that weren't here discussed tonight that, you know, I've talked about for years, and it's, if we're going to do some, let's see what we can do to get a bunch of them there.
Are you looking to, okay, my, my intention was to go through each one of these, hear the recommendation, then see if there's a motion for that.
Yeah, no, tonight, yeah, without a doubt, I'm on board.
Perfect, I didn't want to cut you off, or if you wanted to...
No, 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 I'm all set, thank you.
Perfect. Yes. You just go ahead and...
Mr. Chairman, may I have special consideration to hear what Mr. George Dolinsky has to say about Chapman Street, please?
Okay, yeah, we'll do that for the, in the interest of, of time, though, we're going to have to limit the comments to three minutes. Mr. Dolinsky, if you'd like to speak, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And just as a reminder, we're not going to have a back and forth, but we're going to offer you an opportunity to provide comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Dolinsky, Chapman Road. I want to thank Deputy Chief over here for doing a great study on Chapman Road. I've been a proponent of the speed bumps to try to cut down some of the speeders. I may disagree with some of his numbers, okay, but his volume of 3,548 vehicles, of which 2% is speeders, is about 71 cars that were speeding down the street we could have ticketed and get whatever we do for speeding. I would be an advocate, and I know I was proposing and asking for speed bumps to control what was going down the street. I, I see what the deputy chief is saying. I'm willing to compromise somewhere along the line if I can get something to indicate that the speed on the street, however you want to word it, is heavily, was it heavily residential or heavily...
Thickly settled.
Thickly settled, thank you very much, thickly settled, speed of 25 miles an hour or whatever you think is the correct speed for that street. I, I think we can work together on this, okay? Maybe the speed bumps were maybe too advanced or too much, but at the same time, we need to close down or shut down some of the speeders down the street. I don't see that, I'm disagreeing with the machine itself that he put up there, but the numbers say that the average speed was 29 miles an hour or 33 miles an hour. I still see a lot of speeders. Truck traffic, and, and he had mentioned this earlier, truck traffic was abominable at one point. We had 18-wheelers going down the street like they were going out of style. And if anybody remembers, and I know Scotty would probably remember, and probably Joe too, that Chapman Road at one point was a two-way street, okay? Until we had a girl hit by, one of my neighbor's kids was hit by a speeder going down the street as she came out from behind the ice cream truck. And we petitioned the town to make Chapman Road, and as it turned out, the people on Peters Drive did the same thing, to make it one-way. But Chapman is still a one-way dragway, and it goes straight down, whereas Peters Drive curves. But I'm willing to work with the deputy chief in coming up with a resolution that'll, that'll appease both and save the town and save the people living on the street some aggravation and everything else. That's all I have to say, and I thank you, Matt, for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. So with regard to parking on Grove Street and Pleasant Street, what is the recommendation?
So the recommendation was to make it no parking on, sorry, lost my, on the, east side of the street from the driveway of 168 Pleasant Street up to the intersection with Pleasant Street. So it's about 122 feet.
Okay. Do any members of the board have a motion? Okay, so a motion to adopt the recommendation of the deputy chief is made by Vice Chair Carrera and seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. And then Simpson Street Parking. I mean, we hear your recommendation again, and then...
So my recommendation, the short-term recommendation, is to install park, no parking signs on Simpson Street from Canton Street to the Atgrave Railroad crossing, making it no parking from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on school days.
Okay.
Motion made, spoken by the deputy.
Okay. So the motion to adopt the recommendation of the deputy chief is made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes unanimously. I, I do like the idea of a, a subcommittee to take a look at, at the questions of what, what goes into having a sidewalk in that street. Seems like a, you know, because it's a street that links two of our schools, it, it just feels very natural for there to be, you know, some way to walk between those. So as far as that's concerned, are there members of the board who would like to be part of that subcommittee and, and take that on? And as we mentioned, we have this July, early July meeting, perhaps relay a recommendation in July for the purpose of, if there is a recommendation, that could be an article, it would show up on the special town meeting article following July.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if it's still in existence, and I thought it was, I thought there used to be a sidewalk committee in town. Does that not exist anymore?
I've never heard of it.
No, they took, that was interested, and they wanted a highway street.
Oh, yeah, they wanted their neighborhoods. Yeah, I remember that one, but, okay.
It's dysfunctional now.
That's, that's the only reason why I was asking, because I was like, you may already have that, so, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to be on that subcommittee.
Okay, so we've got Mr. McCrisky, anybody else interested? No, I'll do it as well, I'd love to be, be a part of that, and we will work with, also with engineering and economic development, there might be grants available to cover these things, and wherever that's, wherever that's the case, that might be a good opportunity for us to write a grant and make that request. Mr. Tisdale, you have a...
Yeah, I can just, you know, refresh the board on, on how we came up with our last plan to address sidewalks, is we came up with a transportation task force, it was, it was the police, engineering, DPW, town manager, I believe there was a selectman representative, OCPC was on it, and we came up with a ranking plan, and that's how we went through and ranked it. There is no more sidewalk committee, that, that went away years ago. That's why that task force was formed. Now that we've completed the plan and we're trying to get this new complete street ranking completed, so please do the survey on the website, add sidewalks into it, add bike lanes, add intersections, roads, whatever you think to improve traffic around town, go on there and add it. We really need that data before we stop picking and choosing areas to put sidewalks in.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Through you to the town manager. I, Assistant Town Manager, I would suggest that you contact the school department. The younger people in town actually do an awful lot more biking and walking than people like me. And you might get some really good information from them.
I think that's a great, great point.
So just in, in the interest of, you know, I mentioned a subcommittee here. Subcommittees that have two members, it can be very problematic, you know, what exactly constitutes a quorum, for example, or, you know, so I'm going to, before we, we create something like this, I'm just going to run it by Brian Winter, see what the, what might be a more optimal arrangement, because if we're, if we have to deal with opening laws because we have a subcommittee, but it's only two people, it can get, it can get easy to make a mistake. And I just want to make sure we, we have a setup in a way that, that we actually have a chance to succeed and not immediately blow ourselves up. But we'll, we'll discuss that in the next meeting, and we'll come up with something. But I think it's, I think it's a, a great recommendation that we'll, at least should start exploring. So the last item was Pleasant Street, Lincoln Street intersection. Mr. Tisdale, could you just remind us of your recommendation for that? And then we'll hear if the board...
Okay, our recommendation is to install the, the stop signs that were originally there, put the correct stop signs there, evaluate them for six months, approximately six months till July 1st, come back to your board with data showing the, the accident, the updated accident information, and for this board at that point in time to reduce the data and either keep that situation in place or evaluate midterm and long-term solutions.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve is spoken by the engineer.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion to adopt the recommendation of the town engineer is made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So that's unanimous. So in the first meeting in July, select board meeting in July, we will revisit Pleasant Street and Lincoln Street to reevaluate data based on, on this, this change. For Chapman Road, we'll look at the current data plus March and June, and if we, you know, maybe just take a look to see if, if there's any changes or if there's a vague system pattern on that street. And then we will also have a recommendation, or at least, if not a recommendation, at least for the discussion regarding a sidewalk on Simpson Street, to offer opportunities for people to travel that road walking in a little safer way. Great, I, I really appreciate your time. Oh, yeah, I did, I did forget, sorry, Vice Chair Carrera had, had an additional item that he wanted to address, and I, I just wanted to get through the vote before we did that, but all yours, sir.
I asked before about Walnut Street, the double bike path. There's one on each side of the road, mostly, there's usually one on, on a street. And I was, I forget where I was traveling the other day, and, and a street that could have a bike path and, and it's just been paved and, and there's nothing there, only because the residents have called me up there and said, we have a driveway on a 7,500-square-foot lot that's about 12 feet wide, two cars, and they got like four kids, and they come over on the holidays, they go, where do they, where are we supposed to park? They told us to park at the schools. I says, no, no, you're not going to park at the schools and schlep like your apartment renters. I says, we, we got to look at it, that maybe one lane has to go so that the residents can park on either a Sunday or the holiday like human beings. I mean, I don't know where the thought of, I don't remember looking at it with two bike lanes for some reason, but I could be wrong. So that's all I wanted to say is if, maybe you had run it by him, Tom, or whatever, but having you here, I'd like it looked at, and I'll tell you what side of the road is concerned about it, because they're short on the park and then the other side isn't. If you're looking east, it would be the north side of the street. Those are where the tight driveways are.
Yeah, no, I know exactly where you're referring to, Scott.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're referring to, Scott.
They're just afraid to park on the street.
When we came to the board, I want to say three or four years ago on Walnut Street, that topic, exact topic got discussed, and we wanted to actually reduce parking in that area. And we didn't want to go through a big lengthy project that were narrowing the actual curb lines of the roads down. So what we said for that area is to use it as a bike lane to continue our complete-streets philosophy in town. We didn't want parking, and we didn't want to narrow the road down, so that area was just going to be a wider piece of pavement that cars could speed. So by striping as a bike lane, striping roads narrower will theoretically slow cars down, so it kind of served a dual purpose without building curbs out and having a very expensive project. But we can reevaluate that, come back to your board also with the speed hump, with the bike lanes, everything we did on that street in July, if you like.
I mean, it's a pretty simple thing. If there's two bike lanes, sometimes the people that are pedaling their bikes have to have a little something upstairs, too. We can't do all the driving for everybody in town, you know, and sometimes they're the worst offenders, whipping in and out up the driveways and down and out. So I say, and I'm asking, I don't want to make a big deal out of it, I think it's a simple thing. Let them park on that side, it narrows the road down for you, and there's no, the bike guy's got to be on the other side. It's a simple thing. I mean, I don't think we got to go through a big rigmarole, just like on Plain Street when I said, "Just put the flashes up there on the curve, we don't need to, we know what the problem is." That street doesn't need two big bike lanes, just let them park there, and if somebody on the other side parks there, so they park there. I mean, it's just, these people, every, it's been taken out of their hands, just to make it more conforming. If it was me, there'd be no truck traffic on that road. I don't care where they go, but now we got Prospect Street, so it's a pretty good thing. The six dump trailers that come down the other day, and somebody goes, "What's that noise they make?" "That's the brake brakes." You'll get used to it.
So because, I appreciate your comments, I think it's something we need to follow up. I don't want to go too much further, because I want to make sure that we're not discussing things that aren't on the agenda, but you've just raised a problem that we can now take back and perhaps look at recommendations. I'm fine with that, also showing up on the first July meeting just to examine the question that Mr. Carrera asked and then, and offer a recommendation in the first meeting in July.
Yep, no problem.
If you have a recommendation sooner, you know, you don't...
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll take a look at it, and if there's something sooner, we'll come to you.
No later than the meeting in July. Great, so I appreciate you, your time and attention on this, and thank you so much for answering all of our questions.
Thank you for having me again.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And congratulations again.
Thanks.
Wonderful to have you as Deputy Chief. Looking forward to the next couple of years. So the next item on the agenda is to open the special town meeting warrant. We received a draft version of that warrant article. It is, so far as I can tell, essentially the same thing as what was in the special town meeting. The South School Building Committee is meeting tomorrow night to discuss any potential changes, which might be changes in cost, might be changes in, you know, a variety of areas of that article. But in the past, members of the board have expressed a desire to have an article even when we just opened the warrant, so I wanted to have something there, and the school superintendent obliged by sending what we have. But we will have something most likely different coming to us tomorrow. We'll get it by Thursday, we'll have a copy of it, and we'll put it in the package on Thursday, and it will be available well in advance of our meeting next Tuesday when we close the warrant. But I just wanted to give you guys, just a heads up, that it's in there, and it's not a final version, it's simply a draft at this point.
So can we, can we say anything about this?
About the draft itself, or about...
This isn't...
A motion to open the warrant.
Okay, so there's a motion to open the town meeting warrant?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is being seconded. Is there any discussion?
On the article that's going to be put forth, I had it here, it's probably down the bottom here where it had the numbers on it. What I was going to ask is, if they're going to review it and maybe change some things, is there going to be a split?
What do you mean by split? I want to make sure I answered your question.
Fire station was 6535. So what I was, I was thinking about, because, you know, you wake up and you do a lot of your thinking at 2:30 in the morning, I don't know why, but to really give everybody a fair shake and make things easier on the residents, I think we should try to do, if the school department's serious, 25 for them, 25 for us, and 50 on the residents, on whatever the money's that has to be paid back. That way, everything gets, gets straightened away.
Yeah, so that, I don't have an answer to you. Actually, I wanted to...
That's what I'm, if you're going to talk to somebody, you're on the committee, or you're going to, alls I want is that possibly to be looked at, because I think the residents could handle a 50-split instead of all of it as a dead exclusion.
So I'm going to, I'll raise that question with, with town council. There's a couple of questions I kind of have in reaction to that.
Just wanted to bring it up just in case.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll take a look at it. There's, there's two areas where sort of immediately have questions, more questions than I have answers. One is, who actually determines, makes that final determination? With the fire station, it was us, it was also our project, so maybe it is just simply us. But if it's not, I'd just like to have a town council weigh in on who actually would make that final determination. Additionally, my memory's not that great, but I do recall that any, there's a possibility that having a split and some portion of being inside the levy might affect the grant that the MSBA will offer. They're offering that grant with the assumption that that's going to be a dead exclusion, and I believe, don't quote me on this, this is something I want to clarify, make sure that I understand, that if we are going to do this, that it doesn't affect the grant. So it's going to take just a little time to get our lawyers to weigh in on that, give us some guidance. Question, first question is, who actually makes that decision inside and outside the levy? My guess, it's us, but I want to just confirm that. And the second one is, if we do that, what effect does that have on the MSBA's grant? And I will have that, by the time we close the warrant, I hope to have something like that.
It really probably won't have any, any, any problem with the grant, because the grant is one number. We're just looking at how we're going to break it down within this town to pay for that number. When you're on the hook for that number, it's up to us to have the instrument of making it easier for whoever's at best. And I think where, school department's going to benefit this, put a little, you know, shot in a gun so that they can pick up on their side for what they're going to gain, and then we're going to pick up 25, and then the residents, because the next thing that's going to be coming out of anybody's mouth is, "Let's do the middle school."
Yes. Ms. Roberts.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding the article or the draft article as well, and I want to ask more probing questions to Mr. Vice Chair Carrera's approach. So if we look at the total cost of the building, can you give me that number?
The total, no, I actually don't know that. I have 114?
Yeah, 113 and change.
So that's the 113. So then, 113, take 50% of that, take 50, so can you give me the numbers that you have? You gave me percentages, Vice Chair Carrera, can you just give me straight numbers?
There's, the 113 isn't the real number.
That's what I didn't recognize, the 113.
The 113 is what we have to bond, because that's what they say it is. The money coming from MSBA, if it's going to be, was it, was it 70 or 90? Well, no, what would our share be after their money comes through? Was 42% or something? All right, so call it 70 million to make it easy math.
Okay, so, yeah, let's do 70 million.
That's what, we don't want to throw on the residents. I don't want that all on them. We didn't do that, you're talking less than 30 million at the fire station, and we did a 6535.
That's right.
That's why I'm looking for the school, they're the ones pushing, they want this, they don't want to listen to a one school behind the regular school, the South School. They want this big, big thing, all this money, it's going to tie a lot of hands in town, so let them put some skin in the game. 25 out of their budget, we'll try to do 25 out of here, and then the rest would be on the residents. But I don't think it's fair to put 100 on them and then come out of the guns, start talking about 200 million for the middle school.
Right, I was just trying to...
Where's the police department and everybody else the rest of the way? That's what I'm worried about.
Right, I was just trying to, through you, Mr. Chairman, understand the hard numbers versus the percentage, because I'm more of the, let's look at the numbers, and if we take the numbers, then I can kind of theoretically look at a budget inside or out, but without percentages, because these numbers keep, they change slightly, but they are meaningful changes. So I guess through you, through you, Mr. Chairman, to, Mr. Coulter?
In round numbers, through you, Mr. Chairman. From what I've been reading and trying to calculate, it looks like there'll be a $4 million service of the debt. So if you use that number, what the vice chairman is suggesting, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Scotty, is that $50 million would happen within the debt levy, not 50 million, excuse me, 50% of that debt service, 4 million a year, would be paid through the levy, 25% through the school and 25% through the town. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes.
That's what Scott's saying.
So I just want to, I think this is a valuable conversation to have, I'm 100% on board. It's not on our agenda, I just want to make sure that we don't travel too far outside the scope of what we have here, and...
I was just asking a question.
No, by, yeah, no.
And I was just asking a question, too.
I'm 100%. This is what we're here to do, we should have these conversations, we just need to make sure they're in here right.
You want to vote on the finish?
Yeah, so we have a motion to open the warrant, and it was seconded.
And we didn't go, we didn't take...
We haven't voted yet, so all in favor of opening the special town meeting warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we, the open, special time meeting warrant is open. I do want to mention, this is not also something we don't have to vote on tonight or discuss necessarily, but I spoke with the town moderator, he mentioned, sorry, at our last meeting, we voted to follow the calendar that was laid out in the document that I provided, and that included a special time meeting on February 3rd. Our town moderator has a vacation plan for February 3rd, and he asked if it was possible to move it to the 10th. I wanted to give everybody an opportunity, a week, to think, think that through, what the consequences are. We can either go with the 3rd and use, and the deputy town moderator would serve as moderator for that one meeting, or we can move it to the 10th, and it would be the moderator. I don't have a very strong opinion, one way or the other, but we'll just work through the consequences of both choices and make a decision when we are closing the warrant. If anybody wants to make a motion to change the previous vote, that would be the time. If nobody has an interest in changing the previous vote, then it remains February 3rd. So that was the last item. So the last item on our agenda is consent agenda, approval of open session minutes, meeting on November 13th, 2024, November 19th, 2024, and November 26th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Oh.
I just have one thing that needs to be straightened out.
Sure.
It's on page three of November 26. It said, it said Vice Chair Carrera added that he believes a representative from the school. I said, "The school committee or the superintendent," because the word representative, it could be the janitor could show up. So I need that changed, because I checked back in my notes, and I did write, "School committee to be here," or the superintendent.
Okay, so it says page three?
Of, page three of November 19th, it's under the diversity equity talk that we had, sorry about that.
That's okay, so the amendment is to change representative of the schools to either a member of the school committee and/or the superintendent of schools?
I would like to see the whole school committee here, but if they can't be, then the school committee and the, a member and the superintendent.
Okay.
Because like, some things are going to be sensitive in that side, and you want the right person there.
Perfect. Jill, do you feel like you have that, if it's, make sure, okay, so she's got that, so is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Did you, I'll second...
Motion to approve as amended?
And I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion to approve was made by Ms. Roberts and seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes unanimously, and with nothing else on the agenda, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So made, second.
Made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, have a wonderful evening. The time is now 9:18. Meeting adjourned.